The night that all of the special meeting plans on commission. We're gonna, let's start with your call.
Here, here.
Lauren, we should set this. Great, okay, so Nick is on public communication. Anyway. Think you all got that.
Good.
Oh, new business is a workshop, big topic. Right in 2035, all that stuff.
First, thanks for coming, everybody. Tonight, we're kind of kicking off with the first part of the workshop focusing transportation as well as some cultural recreation stuff. Jeff Davis from Orson Whitton is going to lead us through this, some of our consultant involvement are also here to help walk through some of this. Again.
Can you go back and would you share the screen?
Oh, yeah. And again, tonight, we're looking really policies and strategies, not necessarily words meant thing, or getting into incentive structure on the P O C D, but you know, if there's other feedback or comments that are interested in that, but getting to the nitty gritty of right in 2035 with some of our first sections. I'm too short for this informative screen.
The hitter.
Yeah.
Up here. Let's try to get that.
Actually, do the share and then I'll. There's a second. As soon as I go. Yeah, give us one minute while we get the screen shares going.
Is he? We'll get to see.
Why can't I press this? What, because that might be on the share option? Oh, yes, that's exactly it. So close out. Yeah, all right, so cancel that. All right, stop share. Now.
Wait, you gotta share your screen, guys.
Yeah, let's get the PowerPoint set, right? All right, there, now, but then how do we get the? Maybe. Yeah, that's the thing, we lose that menu. We will share a screen. For this. Now, maybe once you go to your computer, you. Oh, it's here, gotcha. There you go. All right. Older than I look, not next. How many master degrees does that? All right, well, thank you, everyone. We are in the buckler seatbelts portion of the P O C D updates. I like to tell my clients when we get to this point, like, this can be a time to easily get stressed. There's a lot of information, there are a lot of decisions to make, and there will hopefully be a lot of opinions from the public internally, staff, things we need to iron out. But I am committed as master of the ship to keep things low stress, positive. This is, at the end of the day, a really positive thing for the community. No one is going to die based on the decisions you're making, and, you know, this is all, this is all good, this is all positive happenings for, for the community in spite of any struggle that we might need to get to some. I'll document. So we'll be on my team to make sure that the version control is, is handled, that as we're getting feedback from you, you're getting one set of comments back, and we're really trying to make sure that everything is organized. So wanted to just go over expectations for tonight and what you can expect in the near future over the coming months as we go through this portion of the process. So for tonight, you know, we have two major chunks of the plan for your review. So transportation and because transportation issues are covered in chapters one and four, and maybe three, but I'm probably going to recommend that most of that stays in chapter four, although we can discuss this first. We went, you know, one meeting with our transportation consultant team, so we've got Natalie and them with us today, who that was important to rather than, you know, have them come three times for each of the chapters that they're working on, to their wants to respect their time. And on top of that, we have chapter five, which of course deals with parks recreation, historic resources, civic spaces and organizations, and entertainment recreation. So that's what we're hoping to respond to. Oh, we have two hours in the agenda, and if we went line by line and policy by policy, strategy by strategy in great detail, not only would we run out of time, but you would probably lose your minds a little bit, and not here to make anyone go insane. So we are going to try to focus on the things that really seem to be maybe controversial or things that might need some more conversation amongst yourselves. Also, what you can be thinking is we're having these conversations, you know, what are, what are the no brainers like? Yes, yes, we all generally support this, you know, we'll send you some tweets, you know, if you get a chance to write down specifically some things that you would like to adjust, that's fine, but let's use this time for things that are like, whoa, I don't understand what this means, or I have a problem with this. Or, geez, I don't know what the public is going to think about this, or another of the outcomes for, for this evening or classroom meetings, as if you're like, I would love to know what the public thinks about this particular issue before we make a decision. That information to draw up some off surveys over the coming months and also the public on some of these specifically. So that's overall. For this evening's. Want to think generally as we're going through these, and again, we'll go line by line, is there general support? Is there support with changes? And again, for purposes of tonight, I don't necessarily need to discuss, oh, I want to change this wording, but is there something substantive about the strategy that we'd recommend changing, or is there something you do not support? And hopefully, you know, any of those specific red flags that do not support this can generate some conversation tonight. We also want to think about what's missing, and we mean that in terms of not only the policies and strategies, but also the narrative. And again, this is something that, you know, just kept feeling like, I don't feel like we're really addressing this particular issue, and I really heard this from the public, that made sure that's addressed somewhere, that story is told through the chapter. Also, if there are any particular maps or graphics, I know at one point in the comments, you had suggested a map, that's great, so you can start working on those things as well. Then finally, as I, as I started with, also want to be thinking about, do any of the issues here rise to the level of wanting to send out a survey? And moving forward, from after today, you can expect very soon a draft of all six chapters. So we'll be talking for you tonight for chapter five, we've got a draft for one through six. We also have a draft of the introduction language. As a reminder, chapter six also includes the implementation approach. So that's one of those things that we've talked about, how this is actually gets implemented over time, what is the structure of a decision making. So I think it will be very important for you to see all of that together, so that as we review the other chapters, you know, we'll review them bit by bit, you'll have the context of all the other sections. So staff is currently reviewing that, we'll make a round of edits, and as soon as possible, we will call that, and that way you'll have weeks, if not months, to fill out homework for future meetings. Each chapter, you'll see, the format will be basically what you see for chapter five tonight, start with those key points, what we've heard from the public and through our research. We have a section that we have developed in, in, in conversation with staff called how we go about doing things. So in our first attempt, a list of policies and strategies, there were a lot of things in there that made sense, that were things that, yeah, the town would like to do, would like to continue doing, but they tend to be things that were either ongoing or things that you're already doing as a community and are just going to be the way you go about doing things over the course of the ten years of this plan. So these are things that are assumed to be outgoing and therefore not being the information matrix, but we want them to be captured in the plan narrative. So just to give you some context, that's how that section, which was not in our original, outlined the plan development. We also have written descriptions of the maps and graphics that we would hope to create, a list of specific policies and strategies, a spotlight on resiliency, wherever that seems to make sense. Again, some questions at the end, whether that be directly to staff, whether that be to you, and any of those could be survey questions for the public if you would like to get that information. Continuing moving forward, after you have reviewed a section or chapter, so after tonight, if we get some good direction, we're going to take what we've heard and turn it into an actual formatted chapter. So we've got a word template that we'll be using, I will be inserting the actual map, putting pictorial graphics, so that by the time we meet again ever, you'll have five fully drafted. And again, of course, we'll make updates to those, but that's, that's the goal, that as we move along, we're building chapters, and by the time we get to December. Up to you, whenever you are comfortable having those pieces posted to the website for public review, whether I get that out sooner, and, you know, with, with the caveat that this is a work in progress, and we welcome all the feedback, or if there are certain things you want to workshop yourselves for, before that goes out in public, really up to you. It is, it is your document in that regard. All your need.
Welcome people. Right.
My mind, there's someone to put in there. Thing that says progress. People will think, oh, what are you doing? Just moving empty pages, even if they really aren't damn pages, it's something in there that makes it really clear that this is. And notes, things like that. I see, I wouldn't. I mean, just always on point. I mean, everything that we could also be more important, people care.
Yeah, no, that sounds great. Yeah, I like transparency of that income and how it struggled with some. You know, over the last ten years, I've been warned about, I think it's a very great reading step that you do that and has helped progress draft, et cetera. People understand that you still provide that feedback. Listen, so progress, make comments.
Yeah, I like that.
And also, they might want to see how, how we did that update. This is somewhat. You know, it's. But I was like, no, I think it's for anything just from the concept of, so far, the most consideration we get.
Well, I agree, I think the transparency feature. And also, I think we'd always like to get more feedback than. Sure. So I know they generate some, and people know it's going to be there, but still open to discussion instead of floating.
You're talking about putting all of the chapters up or just the ones?
Up to you. So once we get, you know, once that was reviewed and we have the, so there are a couple of things, right? We've got these, the summaries, and so if, once those are all done, we want to put them all up, and say, these are what we're building the plan on, those can all go up whenever you're comfortable, and then we can put the formatted chapters up as they're ready.
I think maybe yes, already. I think there's a lot of basic. Chapters, you know.
Yeah, there are full sections, you might say, I don't think this is needed, but.
Why not? They can always get the other documents. And they're available.
Yeah, and that's the other thing that will, we can keep all the iterations online, this was this phase, now we're at this phase, and if you want to go back and see what's changed, we heard this, and this is what changes. Yeah, and then they've got the whole iteration, they can always go back and we got, might be as opposed to, you know, all the closed door conversations, then, you know.
With that sort of thing, like the two versions, one is everything we started. We are now. I think it's not even, we're always wondering, what are you guys doing?
Yeah.
And somebody's, there's very few actually who are really looking at it.
And there are some people in the community who are really looking at it, yeah, absolutely.
Probably more.
Yes, yes. Just one quick item there, we just want to make sure that in our messaging of that, that, like, better term, version control, we don't want to confuse people with too many versions out there, because then we're going to have to just make sure that they're proper date, but then, oh, you're hiding that old version. Like, nope, we just want to make sure you're looking at original, and then here's the latest updates. We'll just want to make sure, and, you know, if all of you are talking to people or have questions, we'll just want to make sure we put them up there, like, make sure you're looking at the latest data. Otherwise, we don't want to get comments on draft one or on draft.
What I'm thinking.
But we can figure out the logistics on that, but again.
But it's important.
It's important to just say that, that if we have every version out there, sometimes that gets overwhelming for the general public who's trying to, or where do I start? Where do I begin? We'll just have to make sure.
Okay, is the interface set up in a way that we can bring the packages and like the recordings of the meeting?
It's already up there.
And it's all the same, so I think then I'll just have to check the board back and buy a meeting.
It's all on great of rough.
All great.
Okay.
And another thing that we are doing, that we've added to the scope, is after each of these meetings, we want to set up focus groups. So what people call, we did a round of focus groups with community organizations, people. Four, so we're planning on doing another four throughout the fall. We've got a draft schedule to staff, and we're, we're going to finalize those dates, the first probably not next week, the week after, and then from there on, if we, after. That heads up, if you weren't to attend. So, and we'll, we'll have that very specific opportunity for, as well as in these meetings and.
Are those the same groups that you've already had focus groups with? Are these?
So this is, there's a master invite list, and so they will all be invited, and it'll just be a matter of who. Like.
And if someone wants to be put on that list?
Yeah. Also, wanted to just fill you in on some conversations. This is my last slide, before I'll turn it over to the conversation. I'm going to talk about the role of strategies in the plan. This is something that is a quality that is, we've had conversations with staff, I think, you all know, the goal from the very beginning was not to have a laundry list of two hundred strategies, we want something that was concise. We've been trying to build that down. Again, that was one of the reasons for the, how we go about doing things piece, so you could have a more concise set of strategies. However, as we were working with staff on this, the question came up, well, actually, COVID taught us this lesson that things can change like that, and things we think are a good idea today may not be relevant at all two years from now. Great things are moving. So now, staff really wanted us to be explicit in the introduction, that the strategies is really the, the goals, the vision, policies that are your guide star for the next ten years, that ideally would remain constant. And so we tried to write into both the introduction and the information section, a way for strategies to be flexible and have a system to allow them to evolve over the course of ten years. And if you, basically, if you decide, wow, this is no longer relevant, you have a mechanism for showing your work, saying, this is no longer relevant, these reasons we thought it was ten years ago, we're going to do this moving now because we can have a better meet the vision and goals, policies, and given current situation.
Question about strategy, but it sounds like we're spitting, but I promise you it's not.
Sure.
But we choose this. Very often I saw in these things, strategy means to evaluate or continue to evaluate.
Yes.
I'm thinking that the strategy isn't to evaluate, to do things. So framing the thought processes, maybe there is one way to evaluate X, Y, Z, or there's evaluations. Maybe that's a good thing, administrative thing. The other part is, in order to meet these goals, strategy is to align these things and get for like a number of. Valuate, evaluate to that.
And so evaluators evaluate things are maybe something that moves into how we go about doing things, and it's something you want to capture, but isn't really a strategy. So that's an option. And actually, one of the other things I meant to mention, this, you know, a lot of communities do want to be very specific in their strategy, they want actionable things you can check the box on. We may get to things that are just too controversial, and like, you're not going to resolve them by the time this, you go to, and there are certain things you may, your, your strag, you may need to be in evaluate strategy with the outcome of law, like, we didn't figure this out, but we may not, we just may not as a community, ready to say this is a specific goal, right? So we'll do our best to get as close to that as possible, and if by December, it's just like, there are things that, wow, the community is just not ready to get into. These are the plan, like, you have to still address it, but maybe it's not.
That's really sort of like. There must be at least sixty of them. Chapter.
Yes.
And that's a lot, that's a lot of strategy. You see, you have maybe one strategy, maybe you have three strategies, transportation.
Yeah, so transportation is a big one, and I'm guessing after this conversation, we're going to be moving things. I couldn't leave this down. We'll see in the others, we have, we have far fewer, because we had this knowledge and were able to do the other chapters nicely.
Maybe they're not.
I think.
Yeah. But what happens, so I've done this a million times, be corporate, yes, strategies are so different than tactics to people. The tactics are the ones that are specific, flexible, that you're actually out there short term, and they're doing. The strategy shouldn't be changed, but I would even say, I know you have six chapters, if you have more than six strategies, we'll probably do a good job. So, but some of those strategies, as I saw, are actually tactics. So I think if we define those two in that fashion, we'll get to more exploitable tactics coming out of the big vision strategies. You guys made this, and those are my thoughts.
I agree, I agree, I just, the other thing to note, same, some of these things, they all sound good, but we really don't know what the costs are, we don't know if the money would be available, maybe not necessarily solve the problem, but maybe you have just a whole, what's unlikely that because it involves so many things that I've done, or we know funding now is very nuanced. And that's nobody's fault, yes. I saw some money aspect or even political aspect.
In, in chapter six, I added, I add a little call up box on funding, because it comes up all the time, and it had already come up in some of our past conversations, so I anticipated this. Our plan is not a budget, right? I, you need to consider, like, if something is just so out, out past the moon, like, we will never be able to afford this, why get people's hopes up, we're not going to put this in your plan, that's fine. If, however, this is something you did, is really valuable, and I find a way to make it happen, then, then we keep it, because there is that aspirational aspect of P O C D. But I agree, if as we go through this process, you're like, oh, that idea, that is not going to happen, you're not having the money to do this, and or having like. I mean. What it is.
The, the great example of that, I mean, I'm running for, but who cares? You actually kind of addressed it a little bit. Train station for rock.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and we don't want to talk about it, we've been evaluating it decades. You're on brand. We want to build it, it's what we want to do.
Yeah.
And in fact, I'd say we want to go farther and say, and here's where we want to build it, because I think in the room, we can probably come up with, here's where it can go. You've got a two percent slope, that's what you can do, but you can't turn it as much, that's what you can do. Like, in the internet, you know how it works, you know how elevators work, when you have a parking lot. Lob some, here's where it goes, and we want to build it.
But we want, that's important enough, but yeah, exactly.
And that's a fundamental work, creating too, because the money come from.
Like the swimming pool.
Yeah.
Every one of those, it's like, remember the money, but look at, look at what they're spending on fields now, right?
Yeah. Right. So again, if something's just way out of that field, and you don't care about it enough to make it worth looking into the, the money issue, then, yeah, we can get rid of it. But there are certain things that, this is an aspirational document, and you still want to make this happen, and you got to figure it out. And that's a perfect example.
Of a master plan, we don't want to do anything that messes up the idea.
I'm, I'm up to my own strategy, because this is incredibly efficient document. We got everything in this in ten years, no one recognized, completely different town, set up for immense power. I'm not, I'm not saying we're going to get out of our either person. My, my mind about it are, to put them in land on the stars. Everything, and how, the word that always kept coming through my mind while I read it, prioritization, right? We can't have everything, but what do we want for, I'm wondering if some of the. It, you know, be flexible is to do some consolidations on these. And kind of went across categories, but then to see if we're going to prioritize, next question is, do we need the prioritization leadership improvement in this document? Do we want to put that back to that base on our own? Well, like, so when, when I'm looking at strategies, I have, these are our priorities over other things, and trying to have that split between the two, and then that way, yes, there's a lot in there, but this is really.
Well, we just start. Because I don't, I think.
And so, and I think appreciate this conversation, because this helps us, you know, we don't necessarily have to go line by line, but to get, when, when you get these, you know, general directions from people, I'm quite sure trying to, that will make it easier for us to go back and. Press that. All right, so yes.
All right.
Great. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Natalie, and as whenever you get to the end, just let me know, and I will pull through. Got, this is more for the purposes of people watching from home, so they've got the actual text.
Okay, we sorted. So we have eight policies in the first. Ben and I will.
Ben and I will. One. So the first one is through the policy promote safe and accessible active by person of funding, ADA compliance, initiatives. So this is really about getting people to be able to move around outside of their cars and comfortable and get to the places. So first strategy is about funding, schools program, you know, the access to schools. The second one on the screen is about conducting a townwide ability audit, so that we can give more information on where it prioritizes improvements in addition.
But it wasn't in the complete streets. The the audit of, say, the the slopes and all that stuff, there wasn't a complete street, so it would be like.
Right, they have different, yeah, like different meetings, or the complete street is more about that activity and what type of likely or cycle. Then the last. The last one is about pursuing, sorry, the gold bicycle level, bicycle friendly community designation. So again, like supporting that vibe has brought us.
What does gold level bicycle friendly destination buy for us?
Um, it's it's kind of nothing too tangible, but I think you can use it as a kind of a way to promote as a place where people like to have more about like building a culture.
Not a certification.
Yeah, but I mean, for example, it's not high to like you. So what kind of things would make us look? I think having different programs for people's bike, kids' bike, people or bicycle ability.
This idea was brought up by the.
If it's only policy, I guess, there is a line, I don't know if it needs to be in this. I guess there's another question. It's a good thing to have, does it need, need to take up this document?
And that designation shows that communities that have it are showing exceptional progress in being bicycling or real and accessible transportation and recreation. That's really what it was, if that's something we wanna do, that's what that gold level.
Who knows that? I mean, a complete streets kind of speaks to itself. If this is saying, oh, we're useful, that's that's what we can do. We're not a COVID hog. Hills and spaces, can't do this. We will never get there. Everybody's got, like, can't do it.
But is it something we wanna strive for? And and that's, as we start thinking about these things, just because we can't accomplish it everywhere, are there certain areas we don't want to?
In the perfect way. Is imperfect.
I mean, no different than how, we don't have sidewalks everywhere, but when we get them, we get them installed, knowing that hopefully.
You know, maybe I'm losing it. But when when I think of something like this, it'd be nice to have physical infrastructure to protect bike. Right. But I don't know if I get that, this strategy, right? I I would be more supportive of like physical barriers to protect bike, well, for major corridors or something. Supposedly this, I have to Google out, find out what that is, see what it does.
You know what I mean? I think I feel like one thing that doesn't come across in this list is the building on the complete streets and trails plan that we have in here, that's in the how we go about doing things section, because it is ongoing. As a recently completed plan, step would be to continue now to implement those recommendations. Because, you know, the town's already done this big prioritization process and identified where the paths are, networks, and that needs to build that infrastructure and get funding for it. So yeah, so those infrastructure recommendations are definitely important. And I think in this one about the bicycle friendly community would be speaking more towards that aspirational vision and culture building. So again, I guess it just comes down to like hearing your priority, but.
Be helpful, go exactly. Gold level. Because we don't know what point most. Revolved here. Bobby Curtis, what that. I think to Warren's point, the the separation. I don't really know what that would be, what we're aiming for on that. Because that was kind of the western. It just had two lines, a foot apart, so it crossed. And even that gave a little separation, literally traffic, people walking and people walking. If I didn't know what brought me, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
But these streets is a cross. Normally, we're never at the process. And so just, I'm just wondering if this needs its own thing, or if this just. I'm worried. We open a target in that. This looks like it's a piece of.
Yeah, this is.
So this is trying to capture a whole lot of those things. And this captures the infrastructure, the policy, the bike lanes, the things we're talking about. Because we're try, we're trying not to take all the strategies from the streets policy and put it in here. And we're trying to get statements for you know, certain levels of, hey, this policy will encompass many of those things that's in that whole complete streets plan already without replicating. Yeah. So again, it's, we're trying to be concise and find these you know, statements or shooting for certain designations that encapsulate all of the other items that we're trying to fit. But.
Does, does gold level bicycle friendly community improve ADA compliance? I don't think so.
So they don't approve ADA.
They can improve, says it improve it. Like, I don't know how that works.
Improving, so if the policy is talking about improving ADA compliance, the gold level community talks about looking at communities making, you know, bicycling and accessible transportation and recreation options for all residents. So it's how can you bike, how can you walk, how can you get around? And that's where ADA falls in.
Pardon my confusion, is this or is this not already in the complete streets? To pursue gold level bicycle friendly? Or were they not able to get it in on their last?
So it's not, I don't believe it's in the complete streets policy. I'm not sure if it's from the district's plan or not. But we have heard from the.
Yeah.
Is it, is it the words gold level that? Well, because it seems like that's, I mean, if it was just pursue bicycle friendly community, I mean, that's I mean, what we're doing. I know, I don't need to be word spinning again, but.
I mean, it's another way to think of it is, is it could be like a low hanging fruit type of strategy where it's the steps it takes to achieve this are are not, it's not, doesn't have a high barrier to doing it. Cost and what you actually need to do. So it could be something easier to accomplish that gives the town more recognition of bike friendly place as you implement.
Just like the door.
Yeah.
Okay, what is the link?
We're gonna do a hyper.
What's the leak? There's a leaks as well.
The the league, it's a, it's an organization that basically designates the level of bike friendly businesses. So so it's a a body that will approve your application. Like whether you think you're a per gold level or not. Anyway, we just wanna list out like the whole criteria.
We might get back in history from in this like, because it feels, it feels redundant. Right, and we're.
It's a big part.
Yeah. Or we're just having this.
This statement should. That that's what we're talking about here. We're getting, we have a complete streets, therefore we can do this.
Right.
Therefore, we can do.
Wait, that's my favorite topic.
Yes. So yes, I think this is gonna be an important one based on feedback. As soon as we have a section on the bus transit and.
Yeah, here, I mean, believe me, I've dealt with, I guess, buses my whole life. And this to me brought, reminds me like, we're very few buses, very few passengers, with these long routes, always had to walk a good ways. And the thing is, we never see anyone talk about what's, probably people, it's hard to, it's every. What really is the ultimate cost to take somebody, bus ride, from their house to say, the library, wherever they want to go? I think if we don't know the economics of this, it's very hard to make progress. Because there are really cheap alternatives. You could take, well, let's say, if you have a competition, your Uber type, Bolt type services for, you know, five dollars, maybe something. It just doesn't seem intuitively that A plus costs five dollars per passenger for that transportation. I could be wrong, but I'd really like to know, really, what does a C plus only cost? You know, per passenger, whatever, for a while, if you want to do it. What is this? Because people always talk about, oh, we need to get more stops, we need to work plus. But that's very expensive for that. Employees, all that, those employees, buses, mechanics. They cooperate with their app to just, okay, I want to go doctor. Bingo. The person's at your door. I just think we've moved to a whole different reality and transaction. Individual.
This is the first strategy. Microtransit.
Yeah, so that's something I'd see, almost like a hebridesic.
My career begins, again, those classes. Self-driving, we'll kick in, be here.
I've got it now.
Change it.
But we don't know what it costs, it will. And quite honestly, because I go and move once in a team of and I've seen so often winter or whatever, people happy, they know the cars, happy to walk the road. They actually leave. Then maybe the buses aren't full on it, but they have an app that's gonna tell, oh, we have buses here, but it won't like you might have. I just like know what we are, the cost.
I don't, I don't think really brought in. Brought in, if we pay for that, like, for a cabinet. That's a nice.
When they're all in car. Very simple. Who has a question, anybody, if you're saying, that's weird, that. Yeah, so I don't, I don't try, it isn't. Maybe I'll figure out, but somebody's got. And sometimes it's, when you hear the answer, you're like, oh, I'll make it.
Yeah, I think at a higher policy level, it would be helpful just to hear priorities about, you know, how important is it to explore more micro versus looking at options to fix service model. At the same time, like, they don't have to be exclusive, like, you can go towards us because they have the different purposes and different needs and fixed group transit can be really helpful for people have a certain place they need to go day and they need to get there and then they can go away and having bus stop could help make using the service here and. But at the same time, like, I definitely hear your thing about the future and wanting to be aspirational towards evolving technology. Have those options.
You can achieve electric that can self-drive.
No harm. But rhyming about like part of the the reduction of part of that this transportation, you know, currently we're trying to come into a certain point. Things are planned around five to five year old. Where people will build their lives around.
Right.
What I, what I mean is like these concerns about getting to it from a grocery store or your, your work or your doctor's. You start to build that around the transport that's available to you and so that it's more available. Like as somebody who had school across the bridge to work and then figure out how to get home afterwards. Having more, more frequent routes, right? So I'm not going to have an hour and a half early and then sitting there waiting to start. Hoping I can get a ride home an hour and a half. You know, instead of sitting there waiting for a bus, God forbid the bus wait for each trip or whatever. Having more frequent routes helps save a lot of people. And it's, and I'll get out the business if I can. Or just hoping people will come and buy.
And it's, let's get the, I just, I can't even.
I don't.
But it's not. Yeah. Now, this could be one of those topics for just like, does this belong in our UCD? Is this where this belongs?
I feel to a test, you're like. The fact that right now we do it to protect, to solve problems, a lot of people learn to. We don't want to all of a sudden. More workers.
I think anything sane could do that. Doesn't get anything suggested.
I was reading that.
It just has been a touch. More stops or that.
I think the data I'd be interested in would be coming out of the new bus route that was set up between some days and electric boat. And seeing how that is actually volume of cars on the street, where if people are enjoying that route, utilizing that route. Particularly thinking about that. We're building literal thousand plus apartment in that area, or those economics. And so again, thinking about the fixed groups, through that group called Ford, where we can have all the version. Have a couple of meals. Topic for clothes, that sort of stuff, but then serve the increased population, first building. Seeing data from something very specific to that, that economy or with any kind of or more.
Well, let's, let's see how far we can go. Good intentions. And well, kind of love it, same with yours.
Keep in mind, there's only so much, we have to go with everything we're doing here with the data that we have, or that's under construction, right? We don't have, I wish we had access to that kind of data.
I know it's very new, but it it's interesting, right?
But I don't know if it's even out, I don't know if anybody's done studies, there isn't money to do those types of traffic studies, looking at passengers and in, I don't know what the impact, you know, Deb and I were talking about it today, when we hear about traffic, that what is Amazon, UPS and other home deliveries, what is that? Nobody, my knowledge, there's a lot of things we'd love to have, but we gotta go with the best available. Jeff.
Natalie, anything else you wanna say on on the point to?
Just one.
Bus transit.
Something like that, that's gotta be available.
I don't, I, I don't know if it is, if C has that available. It's not, that's in our, right now.
What's the cost of that? Society will cost the hat too, you know. I think the trade off is the microtransit, yeah.
Different.
Well, but maybe it's both.
Isn't it cheaper to, for the public transit system to invest in go all in on microtransit and concentrate your buses where most people are?
Again, how we're building apartments, right? So that's where we
Right.
We're the work of buses, bigger buses and areas hopefully.
Now we're talking about like, you know, this, and Ryan would be talking about Ryan Public Transit Authority policy. Which, you know, municipality doesn't have much control over. So this is one of those issues where, what do we focus our attention on? What do you, what does you want the town to? And is it the advocate or more efficient, more efficient investment? Fixed group where it makes sense and microtransit everywhere else.
Exactly. I also like the point down.
Yeah. Yeah. Is that, I think that is important, because that's something that draws seat as the regional. They're understanding our conversations, our conversations with them, they've developed a microtransit service for the next day, and then knowing that those things going. But our conversations with them, it hasn't been utilized as much, no one knows about it.
And so that's.
We live there, we don't know.
Yeah, it's a great name, town.
Well, we haven't seen it, it's there.
Yeah, I know, and I find other views. I think during COVID, like a will call. I don't know, I don't think that they're doing that.
Yeah, there is still, there is still a place for it, where you can go on call.
I don't know, is it the same thing that gets you to the senior center?
That's different, the senior center happens.
It's a issue, maybe just in the same state, coordinating.
Yeah, yeah.
Only in, I mean, the, the bridge, as a bus that takes people somewhere, you know, the senior center has.
Yeah.
It should all be in the same app, so, for me. Be into it, because we might actually have buses through that, thinking.
Oh, why?
Is there something about that? The app could do, the app, there's app for that. Yeah, is, is the senior bus driving by this station?
Well, let's.
Yeah, I do, yes. On, the next one is passenger rail, and it seemed that there was far more consensus on this one. But yes, yes please, passenger rail, yes please, and let's figure out where the station's going.
I mean, is that, is that a, we have this potential area that grows, like, where to, or did I miss that?
We actually have.
We did identify.
Actually identified, it's 40 years ago. A little further down, it's solid line, here's where, here's where we think the. They would stop, and here's where the parking would be, the blocks, as they are.
Yeah, we'll fill it back.
You said, state was there, right?
I was thinking more what you were describing, for a map of the town, our law, so, like, here.
There's this, and there's another one, and based on. Actually, people can actually visualize it.
Okay.
All right, so the next one is, sorry, but we're going to find some local roads.
What does this mean exactly? It really. Sounds like we're.
An increase in connectivity between local roads to provide more direct access. So, thinking about the connectivity in town and opportunity to park roadways that'll provide these types of connections. The roads that serve more cars probably through town versus the local access roads that. So the list, the list in here is from the previous U S E D, and so we are still, possible connections that can be made to provide that. And, you know, avoid people traveling further out of the way than they need to.
Hear from that? That can figure it out.
We do not right now, but we are planning to further develop some of the traffic.
Yeah, yeah, historically, this has been, P O C Ds, back to whatever they started, and, and they're, they're used to push developers who want to do subdivisions to extend the road, to leave room for an extension, that sort of thing. So I think in this case, you know, do these connections make sense?
Like the crossroads.
Could you just basically consolidate access points? What are we consolidating? I guess I'm just trying to grab my.
Driveways.
Driveways, okay.
Maybe two developers could put in, each put in their own, or driveways.
My, my next kind of general, I mean, transport, I think, I've asked you before that question.
The map, I think, would go on. Maybe housing over the hill. You want.
Somewhere over there.
Somewhere over there.
I think it was over there.
Well, is it, perfect.
Here, me, that.
Not the one. Murphy's, Murphy's Drive.
Was like a bar.
I mean, they're like in places, some of these are places.
But it's, it's a good list, right, because I see this, and it happened in Northern Virginia, it needed these connections in order to facilitate development. So I don't really know what this means, but.
Are, are these things that, that count? No, okay, yeah, because I'm looking at, like, that one there in particular, I know, private land up there, someone wants to develop it, right?
Like I said, we would push developers who want to subdivide, okay, you're not just going to do it off of driveways, you're going to build a road to this point.
Yeah. Okay, okay, all right.
If this is really focused on subdivision, should we? Subdivision. So that people don't think that we're.
Saving 30 seconds.
Yeah. If you were, if we're not on something.
Yeah. Oh, it's gonna work.
Oh, I thought, once we get to level tactic, right, basically, this is our, this is our ability to say that developers disclose like you do. And we have to have a policy that allows them to do that, and maybe, whatever it is.
Well, again, as development curves, as new development curves.
That'd be in the zone, text, has something to encourage.
I mean, that's the strategy, right?
I don't think it would be in the zone, it would be in the.
Where do, where do we have, I think, connecting part? Route 12, it's the same kind of thing.
That's.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's.
But you're right, no, I.
That is like this.
That, right, there is, currently, there is no language that supports that, it's something that this commission has done forever, right? So, yeah, so I think we want to improve.
Policy on transportation infrastructure being maintained for a long-term, how do you safety resilience? As these two strategies are basically more about maintenance, I would say, and operation, so the first one is. And understand how, when we need to, by the town, and. This would be by, the town, you could create a dedicated capital fund stream, or regular bond.
They have to, and they have a plan, or they have to, they have to go on. It was told, every year, they're taking something.
They have.
For specific, yeah, yeah, it was, maybe 10 years ago, the town proposed for those improvements, and then it switched to putting it in the capital.
And just, you know, it seems to work pretty well, you know, get.
Only thing that we don't do, that's been talked about before, is that couple. Intersection sidewalks. Yes, we need to change the radius, fix that, and put it back again, when it was. Instead of doing, and saying, can we reconfigure something, or do a white chart, anything like that.
So do we do that now, with the Department of Transit? The group one in front of CBS, the mistake, people think that's roundabout now, it's like, very dangerous, right? Not roundabout, it's scatting, then you have to take a left.
I think the amount has, that's what we're asking, because I know they're doing it.
I like that.
Right, I think there's, there's a lot of opportunities.
We saw that either on Route 12, remember what we just proved in Crystal? Where that has.
Roundabout.
Well, I'm not surrounding, but I'm saying, maybe something similar, because that, that was, that's a very odd.
That was an odd one, that's a security one.
Bridge, Bridge Street, the Bayview, I mean, that's like, I won't say, but I would say, especially here, the, the E D track that comes up.
This is a great transition, traffic safety.
Yeah.
Next pause.
And to that, I don't know if I saw this, but I think, I thought I did, limiting left turn in certain areas. Health and valleys, or not. Walker, and.
Yeah.
Can get worse, really fills up, more apartments come online. Well, I will travel really good. But that, in fact, we can't.
Sorry, what can you talk about? Yep, you say.
I was just saying, this is a great transition to roadway safety, that next pause.
But is that like Motherland now?
I would hope so.
What exactly we're doing here? This doesn't seem real clear. Well, it sounds like.
Being safe system.
At least like private, like coordination. But we're now. Trying to. What might newly come out, or newly come created. I just worry a little bit.
Time, I think, organization or system. In four years from now, it won't be safe streets at all, it might be something else. Yeah, so.
Just, just an idea. Yeah, yeah, so right now, currently, the safe system, which is the federal highway. It all.
I'd like to think that.
Right. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so the, and these strategies mainly centered around the fact that there is a regional safety plan going on right now, that I'm a part of. So, like, how, what do you do from there, from having that stand? Patient grant to fund the improvement. And then here we have, the last one here is about access management, private consolidation, we have. Based to limit curts, areas like Route 1.
If I could throw a pie in the sky, I would get out there for. Every single time the bridge goes down, it is an absolute disaster, coming through Route 12 and all of ours. And I'm just wondering if there's some kind of plan, or more science, or a problem I'm going to build on. Something to help folks make it through, so that it's not a three-hour.
Oh, there's a.
Oh, whenever it's hard, think about.
When you said the bridge was down, immediately my head, like, this is.
Which is true there, it's fine.
It's true, it's fine, but I mean, it's catastrophic.
Yeah, I know.
When the whole star goes down.
That's, I, I choose like this, if you want to.
I'm silent. Part, part of our strategy is to be looking at evacuation route.
Oh, incidentally, construction they're doing right now, what we doing the next? That might be part of the solution, because they're going to crossover lanes. To the other, and if they're left kind of in place, that could, something terrible happens. They'll suggest that and say, don't, grass, we, we might need those.
We have a policy on overbuilding, flooding, and climate protection.
Does that fit into any town type policy, on resiliency or? I'm not sure where the town is on that.
So, we are in the process of developing our climate action plan right now, so we're just kind of taking that project off. I think September 18th-ish or so, we'll have, be having a big public meeting and get that project open. Again, we want to make sure through that, we're consistent with both projects.
Any estimate on how long that might be?
Um, I think the plan we're estimating will be done. That's for Josh.
Thanks.
You guys want to comment?
Just basically, the first one would be inventorying flood ground. Building a priority list for. Pressure. Everyone kind of builds off that, based on. All the strategies. Pressure, raising, roadway improvement, we have to have it. Way or cold or pitch. Or kind of designated some areas that are like, we're okay with this, but. Find ways to get.
Just want to know, the first bullet and the fourth bullet seem to be the same. The fourth bullet kind of expands a little bit on the, the first one.
Yeah, yeah.
Is this a public work?
No, it's, it's not, we actually have money in this C I D.
Well, then who would? The subdivision racks and the road racing? Well, we're just, carry out, carry out a review of Groton's road train.
That, that'll, I think if you look at the fourth bullet, that's really what we're going to do, is we're doing subdivision and road train.
And you're funded for that.
We have funding for that, that's correct.
More public.
Yep, so.
So, to me about traffic congestion and expanding bulk and load of transportation and option mystic. One thing to note is, the mystic, hurting study, and so we hash all the recommendations that, here, so. Focus on other ways that this policy could be met. First, coordinating with the mystic, or the working group. Rest. Helpment of greater. Stonington on different options for how to move the goal between destinations and mystic. Like your service, poly service. Funding multimodal improvements through a parking. And, and that was a recommendation from the parking study, but we thought that was an important one to call out, because it is a very tangible.
If we're optimistic, hopefully be a better, or, let's move along.
My, yeah, and so I agree, I. My, my issue is, this is my issue, because I get hit on this all the time, we funded a parking study, we've never implemented a parking study. We're now just getting parking meters, two and a half years later. What we need to have as far as transportation of the mystic, is we need to implement our parking study, not that difficult, go ahead, John.
We're not getting parking.
Parking, parking, sorry, parking tickets, sorry.
Oh, parking tickets, okay, sorry, yes.
But do we all agree that we have a parking study that can be implemented, if, if a town council says, let's do it? And so, my only point here is, very simple, I've asked. Don't be afraid about it, I know you're a supporter, right? And so, my only point is, in this, me, this is very important, right? We have a parking study, that means, in transportation, that we brought up today, all of this stuff, that has to be number one, right? Paid for, it's a massive congestion issue, residents are, you know, unhappy about it, and even Diane, one of the public comments on it, was, you know, you're talking about building up new stuff, let's take care of some of the residents, well, this is, this is job one, part of, you guys.
I would, take all of some of this, and then the absolute, salute, the physical solution of meter parking, getting cleverer with meter parking. Church parking was, because we actually have enacted some. End up.
As a church.
Churchill. It did add to the mix. We can't add much on the Groton side, physically, there's no space on the Groton side. Solution to the parking issue, mystic, or like this. Here's multimodal, and Stonington. They got the space, and I'm planning to curb down that. Fortunately, they all have a monopoly, on the parking side, we'd already got the seat work, that's happened there, about parking lot, voted to. They all just some meetings, we got it, let's do it, and it turned out to be paid, so that was a surprise, but apparently it's popular.
But it would be more popular if the super high demand spots on our main street, mystic, are appropriate price, where they pay nothing. So again, is that incentive, is that on our side, we could talk about this all night.
My only point is, I love to ride, maintenance this. My only point is I love to ride basis this.
We need to revisit the bike share program. We had a. Ask member from the. This vision was. Donated a couple bicycles. Didn't work. Yeah. Sorry, it's got a big hill on our side. We're interested on the other side, so. Lock yourself out.
They, they had apps. Are we, are we excited about apps? The honor of Kevin's. Want for this to be at a higher level, not this. But I would be interested in. Formalized kind of prioritization. One, two, three, or we can say at the beginning, when we put these in a list. The first bullet is the most important of this list. Or have a category that goes, this is really what we're trying to do. Any prioritization. Focus for decision. Priorities. Formalized, so we really could think of. A little bit.
We used to have something, are we going to talk about short term versus long?
Well, so the last thing we'll get into is that implementation plan. Once all this stuff is done, we're not going to start the implementation plan until. We're done, so that we know.
Strategies, that's. But what point do we rank?
Later. First of all, we have this coloring there. There are things like, we're getting rid of this, but then, you know, once, once we get. Everything formalized in a chapter, we'll actually go through the process of numbering things that will also make it easier to prospect. Oh, that, you know, blah, blah, policy, like, I, I think that actually here. Uh, and also help us with the information matrix because then we can make that sortable and it can be something that we. The prioritize, the, the. I think right now you're starting to call stone.
Right, right.
Yeah.
There are certain things you just all agree, like, no, we don't really need this, and then there, we'll get to that level of either our three priorities under this topic and then. The other thing, that's how you'd like to start with that.
That was just. Homework list too.
Yes. Um, one other thing that I want to address that was not on this list, but was in your package was the concept of transportation command and management. I know you at least had a question or your comments on that. We saw some online chatter about today as well. Uh, if you could just spend a few minutes explaining what that is and like that's a policy.
Yeah, so the column here about. Take different forms, but essentially it's. Getting employers or developers to provide people to get to their building other than by driving vehicles. So they implemented it in many things like emphasizing carpool parking spaces or subsidized transit passes. Providing bicycle parking or showers so people can bike toward shower. Um, so what that means for the town is that, you know, you could provide incentives for developers to provide these types of T D M services. Um, or put it into something like ordinance that would make it more regulatory and require. Track how people are coming to work and provide that data back to the town. So there are different like levels of authority that can. That would be the overarching theme is to reduce.
Also something that already kind of happening with this.
And I do want to get narrowed down. In here when there are those opportunities. Or is actual larger employers, I get that vibe.
No, no.
No.
If we're looking at, just this right here, no, no, no.
Sorry, I started by saying that this was not something that was up here when I had to make sure we discussed this.
Do we have any figures on for the bicycle? On the shower replacement. I mean, working place in California. Oh, but it was flat. And it was used by maybe three people in, in, out of. Integrated architects who were really into that kind of thing. Three people took the bikes and showered. All this to be showered elsewhere. You have any numbers on how, how effective that actually is? Thinking, not a lot of people want a bike. Get to work 20 minutes early and then shower there. This, your customer's showering for more. There's not any figures on, yes, this is 10%, 15%. Or if there's some numbers that say, oh, let's pick out number cards.
And, and I guess I also would say like this plan doesn't need to figure out what exactly the T D M strategy are that would be implemented, but it can set up that policy framework of. Establishing that having T D M policies is important. Working with employers and developers. Maybe bike parking and showers aren't the tool that we're used to.
Yeah, but I, I do not, I mean, like, some of the major players have enormous parking problems yet, so. Can you really? With that. Ordinance.
We, we provide ride shares, but imagine, imagine a ride share system. Like your code and see the parking lot. Somehow that. Take your bike from half a mile, mile away. Sometimes I have to park a mile away. Go a mile away and then it's much shorter. Which, which building a, a ride and then you're gonna have to dedicate a resource to it, but getting those bikes. Down and back up around to the parking space. Can you understand what I'm saying? How they do right here as now, you have, you have people grow on platform, drop them back to central location. Allowing people to get from their cars on the ride share. Other people still are not coming from within Groton, you know, a lot of people drive 40 minutes, but they get to.
I wear that's an issue. Issue.
EB doesn't have a parking issue at the fold. EB employees, EB employees have a parking.
Yeah, I think that's, I know. That's why EB worried, they say, no, we don't.
And John, there's been discussions over the last 10 years, like you would be more involved. My understanding is.
No, agree. You're correct. Those didn't really go. They felt it wasn't their responsibility to. They built submarine. Municipalities build parking and housing.
Every part of that space is a place that a business is. And if you take that land and then you put a car in and that car is coming from Norwich, I mean, here and taking. I mean, it's just square footed, right? Yeah, I think it's like, you know. More that we can get people live here. Ride their bicycles to work, live here, there are places where they work. Where did that last 10? Nice as you can to do it. I don't know. Mentioned last time. Caliber site, or, or they just. Last one. grocery store.
Oh.
Friday store. I always try to mention instead, oh, by the way, X number of thousand people are coming to your site. Zero, we're taking the train. Almost zero.
We're getting to those strategies around commuting rates and housing, all that stuff. So for, uh, to, to close up with the conversation on transportation, unless you guys have anything else we wanted to cover. Uh, do you want to think through that question we started with? All the things we've discussed this evening, is there anything that you would be very curious to hear from a public survey or something you'd like to? You know, obviously everyone will get to read everything and comment on it. Are there any specific issues discussed tonight that you think would be valuable to bring to public?
And two questions. Why don't you participate in the public? Question. Hope we can do this. Those, those two questions I want.
I think rather than trying to do a survey, we just, we don't care if you. But that was, I don't know. And trying to get some hints with. Or you get an online survey.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd rather have trying to pull together.
Oh, no, no, this would be, this would be a pop survey. So like this would be online. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right in downtown mystic party. Although I think we're.
So here's what I'd love to be able to. And I'm not sure how we arrive at this outcome. So when I'm in DC, right, okay, we've got train stations, we've got air force. Value of the scale that's taking place there, they have these microtransit. Gaithersburg, Maryland, Bethesda Metro, you have 40 buses that come through in the morning, one metro, et cetera. My belief is, and you know, I'm not sure we're going to be able to achieve. Rain and crop, right? It doesn't mean that we don't have a central or several microtransit centers. That allow us to bundle these different areas to get to different areas. And so I, I don't see it as one central. I see it as microtransit areas that we have bundled. You know, these areas more than just bus or however we do that.
Something like Seacoal. Geno or wider area, right? If we have a bunch of folks coming out of Norwich, where can people get on a bus in Norwich, park there?
So, so I don't know how to answer the question, what, your question was, how do we get that information? And my, my belief is that possible one of the solutions, but how do we ask them on that question if we had a microtransit? Would you use that?
It's just, it's.
Why, why?
Taking you back to Florence, right? But maybe leading to the question.
Will be really.
You might ask them what's in A for.
Yeah.
What about the?
Because then we could go against our.
I mean, depending on the time of day, I pay $20 per year when it's pretty popular and for a bus, I think.
And also there's a lot of companies.
Which I don't think there is. There's not a lot, right?
I think the value of that. But the one get that, you'll have folks coming down those buses, not.
We'll see.
Yeah, it's like all the tran, the bus, the transit questions really also tie into what the goals are for development. What is there to do?
Thank you. So, uh, we're actually. 37 minutes, let's talk parks and rec and work and such. So for parks and recreation, obviously this is one of those areas where you already have a very recent master plan. Our goal is not to, you know. Spit out everything that's already in there, but really to. Reference the existing plan. So if we start by referencing your goals and then. Ways to make sure that that plan is revisited and updated over the next. In years. So. Yeah, rather than. All day in the specific strategies that's fresh, we want to make sure that this, this is very important. Next policy, ensure high quality, safe and accessible recreational facilities and programs to all residents of all ages, different abilities. Here, as we talked about, again, ADA progress report. So this is one of those things honestly that we could probably move to. Ways to go about doing things, that's an annual thing that you're just gonna make a habit of. Evaluate ways to increase recreational facilities and open space. And actually, I. We've already, you'll see, we've already had conversations with the towns where we've made some slight adjustments to these things. And this is one of those examples where, yeah, we're District 4 and just referred to it as West Valley Neighborhood. This next one, actually, the county staff. Just, we don't actually need it. This was a carryover from the 2016 P O C D to revise the subdivision regulations. zoning requirements, require recreation in public spaces in multi-high development, mixed zones respectively.
Yeah, well, the subdivision regulations don't have anything to.
Right.
Doesn't mean anything. So.
Yeah, so that was something we initially had in because it was a, a whole lot from 2016, but, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if we go back to the first one. When we're saying on like number five, increased financial opportunity. Through profit centers, so through, through existing recreational spaces. Adding like, so should a cost. But also in addition to having other types of bases, I'm assuming, what, what kind of financial opportunity? Is this looking for it, not developing profit? Through recreation.
What is your content? What, like, tell me what you mean by profit.
So recreation amenity, like should a cost it? Should be dragging money into the town, not, not just breaking zero to.
Yes.
But it should be a profit center. Now, there's other lots of opportunities the town could have something. The communities have to put a community. That becomes just a general event recreation state. There's a lot of, there's difficulty. For that. So is that what increased financial opportunities mean?
That's my, that's my understanding. And again, these are all the.
Yeah, this is just shorthand.
Great, yeah, this shorthand from.
From that, so maybe we just need to go back to that document and fill it out.
Be specific.
Yeah.
And. Also, I think in here, while we're continuing to improve. Expand facilities, parks, amenities. I would very, very much advocate for language somewhere up the strategies or policy, I really think of the policy. Equitable distribution of amenities. I mean, going, again, carpet on West Closet Valley. Got nothing and we're talking about $65 million worth of athletic facilities and not a single word about, hey, how do we put some on the western side of town? Existing town home lanes that is. Could support a lot of so. You know, it, I think that equitable distribution is a key element that needs to be part of the policy. Number seven, I think, starts to get that.
Address underserved areas. I mean, I would say that.
That even being still in these days. You just, I'm just saying.
We're not the. But yeah, I, I think very specific about equitable distribution. Not just the fact that it is. Nationally worth it matters.
I guess I, I understand. There's so many things that's. Over Route 17. There's a nice basketball area there. I can hear different things. And it's kind of like, it's not very far from.
It is a controller. I, I.
Well, does it have?
Push any of you, that they have to be.
Oh, so they have. I don't, is that our?
I, I mean, if you look at the.
No, it's not, it's not a good thing, I was saying that, but I just didn't know that one.
I, I would just consider to the amount of money that this town currently actively putting. On a grid right now to the athletic field. And I'm not saying it's not needed. But there is, there is a very marked difference. Even the skate park, right? Look, the skate park, they created a new bike situation.
Yeah.
Get passing. But they put a, a stone throw away from skate park. Voting it somewhere where we have nothing for our children.
Little schools are.
There's schools all over the county too.
I know that little school.
Yes, well, but then they closed what? What's grounds?
Well, they closed it. I mean, that's.
Maybe it's not a part for this. I'd say our, our central core includes our stretchings. Plus the street construction, baseball field. That central core is. Plus the street position, baseball field, that central core is active.
Absolutely.
It was every town knows where it is. That's it. Unlike maybe our. This golf, which I'd try to describe how to get to.
Can do it.
Did you know?
Yeah, I did not know you had.
I forget.
No.
So locating these things at disparate places, I'm not in favor of. I mean, park, open areas everywhere, which was targeted. I'm kind of agreeing with you. I think rather than had this try to be one. But important. Don't find all kinds of stuff. Don't have to say, I want you to include the accessibility code.
Yeah.
So. I think having number three and number seven, frankly, we got the word diversity because it has nothing to do with you. Inclusion. So and having be under those combine, combining those two things is what we need to do. We don't need just more. With expand the facilities. Don't just need more. We need to have it right place. Yeah, yeah, so. Use targeted. We're missing a few areas. Not just north of. Add up the number of green spaces, right? So some of those neighborhoods.
But if you look at the north west part, and if you were to open up the reservoir. Only people have been trying to, you know, trying to do this all along. But there's no reason that couldn't be one of our goals. Supposed to make reservoirs safer. People. People in there. And the same for a gun you want, same concern, sensitivity of the culture. They want that people then put in their studies. Way to go. Because you want more people looking at. Those two areas. And this.
Kind of missing from that should be there is. Maybe housing. Then this another. Yeah, open space. In there. Especially now. And it's not forbidden to use, definitely has to use it.
Yeah.
What we've noticed when chased off for using.
Can it exist?
Or show me some kind of coordination. That you could better use us.
I'd like, I'd like to offer. Language and idea. Leveraging, leveraging art recreation. Drive. Then drive more economic. Yeah, I just. Businesses. Free men, people. Interested in moving out there. Think about this. It's a whole different thing. Um, but part of it is, I, I'd like to leverage both existing camps and new placement of recreating. Drive people throughout that. You're right. I can tell you. I don't know if I even know.
I destroy them the northern.
But with that being said, if there were other reasons for me to be there, or if it was a type of amenity like a pool, you put a pool up on the valley, everyone would drive either way or walk either way.
But to sum this up, I mean, we, we, I think summed up, it's kind of like just the first thing, we need to implement this. But maybe what we say is, there's two areas of emphasis we like prioritize. One of those is improve and expand. Maybe number seven, my opinion, address the underserved areas of the community. It does not match up to. And we do take federal funds, therefore, we do take federal funds. Very careful as, as far as.
What's next, dude?
Yeah, right. Uh, so we had a lot of conversation about property management. Uh, and stewardship of existing park and recreation resources. So this is, this is our section that really leans in on establishing a regular schedule for. Parks and Recreation to meet with Conservation Commission. So talk about opportunities for managing these spaces. Trainings, volunteers, planning events. Going back and forth on. Specific needs. That have been an issue. As we want to formalize those conversations and approach to us stewardship.
I think the Conservation Commission, like they give. Same impression staff and they're not, but they certainly are very much engaged in trying to bring the groups together. All of these, you know, town has made its stewardship problems, it's all the land trust. But you're more volunteer.
This, this one. First, I looked at it, caught my eye. Make you not have to rewrite stuff after the fact, but this, that was like a formatting thing, but. This, like this whole slide, all important, great idea, has nothing to do with. And in terms of looking through a document, looking through this document, I want to see this stuff that are interested. I'm not, I'm going to glance over this stuff. So. Things like this, we're trying to administer. That means already there's a physical. This is. Ministry.
P O C D.
But it's, it does fit into the P O C D.
Yes, it absolutely belongs in there, but people are looking at it for different reasons. We want someone from. Even someone who's a developer, who cares about. Wants to build physical. Wants to build, I think so. We want to train you, vote. Like for us, for a creative city, I don't worry for something.
How about a citizens?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So walks in there, almost side by side, sun cleaning system. Physical. Tony, these are. How to make it happen. Very hard. Unhelpful vote. Those key words.
Uh, so this one, we just had some edits from the town to make it a little more concise. Red posing bleeding. You gradually would simply be planned for incremental investment in apartments to provide resources. To the obligations and the demands of community. Anything else related to parks and recreation before we move on?
I guess the only thing. I think yours that. One of them is tired of talking about. The invasive problem. You know, the fact that there's something we could coordinate with public more, a little bit more, so. But not the snowplow effect of, yeah, these not really, because it's really spread throughout the town. And the thing is, I think it's very hard in this town, we have either volunteers or they have. They have any kind of work, it really solves some of these problems. So really, the idea to go forward and think about contracting. Because the only place I know is not the greatest example. The only place I know is really taking on their issues and solve them. It's different, it's really brought home. They hired the same contractor that used. They take care of nasty. Things that require capital. Whatever treatment the association of town. But it's just a different way of thinking. I think so often, say, oh, it's outstanding. These will probably be listed. I think given the way things. Difficult is what they get. What is the?
There's some things that keep this going.
You know, I think something.
Something.
You know, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just talking about that, saying that these, you know, specifically incidents where. Whatever, your volunteers or your town staff, they have to be open to the fact that. Be careful, but you pay.
Isn't this, you doing that this moment?
Everybody blew up point.
There's some stuff they're doing. Before we move on from recreation. We didn't put in what we have heard that section up there, but if we're talking about being very specific. Uh, fencing. Talking about new amenities for playgrounds and most parks and public spaces.
Yep.
Fencing.
I think I maybe already have it.
Did you?
I think, I think I did, yeah.
Isn't there?
Second one.
Second one.
I love one of these. You asked me about it. Someone, someone else asked me about it. Yay. All right. Uh, so for cultural and historical resources, uh, again, this is one of those that's generally a little squishier and, uh. There are legitimate, uh, reasons to say, oh, that maybe isn't super important to include the P O C D, others you may want to. Uh, so for example, the first one was, uh, Grotton Public Library was a little, was it volunteers who could help with digitizing current digitized records? Talk about something that a consultant might do. Much faster, although that can get expensive. So we've discussed, you know, maybe that, that's not rise to the level of something we. U C D. Only we do want to talk about, because there has been some internal debate about this, is reestablishment of a townwide historical society. If that's something that, again, you think would be valuable, is it something that rises to the level of, did you mention?
And when you're talking about the one that was, are you talking about the Grotton Bay historic? By the way, or the townwide?
There used to be a town.
There used to be a town.
John Street or.
We still have.
Doesn't need to be brought in city. Is, is there a Grotton City, sorry.
There's, there's the Grotton Bay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's still.
I don't know. I haven't, I used to give lectures.
Know that?
I don't know. What I was gonna say is, again, this is the type of thing, is this what you want to see in the P O C D? Is really applicable to a P O C D strategy?
I think it's, it's only applicable so far, in my opinion, the town's. Violate of my girl. Right, it's part of.
But is this a P O C D strategy?
I think it's very far down in my rank.
It'd be far.
I would probably wouldn't meet.
Yeah, same.
I don't know if I.
It's, it's.
No, I didn't have to do, but.
I, I think it's one of them.
Yeah, I, I think there's a huge job. In this here, I don't, that's like no really. P O C D, but I think it should be in there actually somehow because. For years, you know, Dr. Kevin McBride.
Yeah, you're mentioning that. I'm not familiar with that work.
Yeah, he's. I guess in decades, we hardly get a lot of work, missing river over there now. Lot of sound. And it so happens, most of the land. Like battle was spent. Always play amazed at, but he always thought that it would be such a great opportunity to explain to school kids that I got. Well, hoping what would actually happen. And the fact that so often. People think of colonial history or anything like that. Background before that, he's even got things that seem to be older. And really old, worked out on the work. But I just think, and he kept talking about it, it grants, because it was. He was thinking it'd be grants to do some really. Whatever QR codes, so. Kids, you know. They could explain the history, so people would understand, they'd be right. And he had a big vision for it. It seems like no one's got. Once you really tell us what to have. And using the, you know, the face properties we have. And it's all central to.
In our open space processing properties, if I go into one, is there a big sign that tells me about them?
Not at all.
Exactly, such a past, because maybe a historic society is not a priority. I think priorities should. For our historic cases. Signage appropriately, because there is a lot. And the one that always comes to mind is, um, the monument over by the. So let's see it, over now, Roosevelt. But it's very small, really. Yeah, exactly. There's no signage. The signs.
There's a little, there's a little sign.
So basically, my. You know, probably have the, the signs here in the central part of town where it can. Or, if I'm going throughout town, nobody's saying, look at all these historic. Um, I think that that would be a high priority. Is having those kinds of.
Yeah, it's sounds like, uh, what you say, encourage. Where it sounds like that money. I mean, that's the way you do it. And then I think it goes back to Lawrence, uh, micro grants. Where that.
Micro grants in mic space.
Yeah, and whether it's. Or maybe it's both, maybe it's historical. Group and these kinds of stuff. But I mean, like those things, it's all about.
But then I think that you can have some. Teacher working of some of these, right? We, we can let people know, hey, this spot exists, and here's some benches to go sit on and enjoy it, right? Um, it, it might as well have them on. Um, come. But have the bench. Or picnic table. Round this with, as a young person, I know, brought this board. We don't have a lot of good. Or. They are. Creating, using the spaces we already have in terms. Get yourself a little art. Or, hey, let's all be together, draw around the, the next.
You got a book on, I'm all for the idea. Google Maps tracks. So if you're driving around and using Google Maps, this thing pops up that says, there's a historical mark. Very often, you're talking to somebody who saw that, because it's called twine. It's a, it's a marker and you don't see it. You don't sit and have a picnic. So I don't think if you build it, they will come so much as they stop and it's interesting things on all four having. Here's where the peacock, here's. Not just a sign saying, here's a trail, people are woods. This is where this war took place and. Maybe within it, some extra things to say, as you say, scan here.
How we got republished and whoever donated.
Several of us.
I think Grotton's very rich on. Groups that are focused on our cultural aspects. I think Grotton is very thorough on that. But I do have a note in that, something I would support is a dedicated resource, meaning like full-time employee. His sole job is to coordinate between all of our civic groups, state, local, volunteer, with the military. I would love to see someone who can actually go out, see what everyone is doing, and then integrate that as appropriate, um, as possible in that. All these events we have in town, as the seasonality thing is the definition. But also making sure that, hey, you know, this is going on, why don't you set up a game here or we'll give you a shout out. Uh, there's all kinds of things that are happening all the time. The matter of, um. Doing a pop-up, uh, situation, even, even leveraging off of. I would love to see our shelter mission have a name, like they bring both.
Okay, okay.
And in the.
We got, we got a.
What I'm saying, you know, it's.
Yes, it is. That's in there.
Yeah, and so just like, you have a.
Yes, yes, that, that's where I have all my.
Yeah, okay.
But, um, yes, I would support having a great sole job. Have a community integrator for civic engagement, civic engagement specialist. So that there is someone in the town who's connecting these people.
No, we heard you.
And the.
What's on there?
Avenue.
Previous one will reiterate that a great thing to have is a P O C D.
Which one?
Well, the, we were saying, oh, I know.
Our talk.
I think if wayfinding sign of mistake is a P O C D strategy, then having cultural.
All right, so anything else on the?
For this last piece, and I wanted to hit your thoughts on this. This was something, again, that really stemmed from. So many people in the public engagement process thing, or we need more things to do. Or we need more things to do, more, um, entertainment and recreation businesses in town, uh, so this is. Simple, we had Kimoine put together some background on that, one policy, one strategy. Uh, conduct a survey of community tires for entertainment and recreation, everyone local organization, property owners, local and regional entertainment, recreation businesses. Proactively encourage foreign users. Uh, so more of something that maybe the. E C would handle and the staff will work. The. It's been going out and and proactively recruiting, uh, more. Entertainment. Businesses, this would be on top of the things that Kimoine is. Town for our town recreation. Um, how do we encourage private?
What are you looking for?
Uh, the. Section actually describes several things. One of the things.
Probably car wash.
Not a dead.
Oh, not car wash.
I said on car wash.
Escape rooms.
Although I have a car.
Good, that's awesome. Okay.
Yes, that's. Why are you talking about escape rooms? Yeah. Uh, but things, things of that nature, escape rooms and axe throwing and, uh, you know, a top golf.
Yeah.
Name, name, name of it, right?
But riding.
A driving.
We have an amphitheater where you can like. Space bear in the park.
Absolutely.
Like.
Yeah, no, I, and I, and you know, we are. I, after all these years. Starting to gel and like getting the real down. Hopefully. With that, little family farm, if that, those apartments come in there. Starting to see right around. Which middle school is a place that we should really be. Fittering as. Some sort of a recreational of. Maybe. This. Well, but I mean, even, I mean, I I don't mean to take away from West Pleasant, but, uh. You know, it seems like a no brainer to use that town land there to create a. Art.
I think so too, because you have the Grotton some coming. Yeah, and you have the pickleball, and it's like the senior center, it's just everybody.
Right.
But they get.
Person living there. Gonna be.
Be more. Said my pleasant valley.
Or maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
The bus. Never it is.
But but I think kind of. Maybe maybe just. We get a lot of suggestions. Yeah, and they're not thinking about the field. Because they're already using the skate park for the fields there. They're great, and I think they all just use those things. Great number. Understand. Containing. But what they're thinking, where can I hang out?
Yeah.
But that's pocket parks, this. Minor, that's the. Actually not just entertainment things. Where can I just go?
Well, even just the basketball court.
Basketball court is okay, that's a little pocket.
Yeah.
It's scattered, but if I'm just entertainment, recreation business. Don't think you use that in isolation. Do more. Commercial thing.
Yes.
That are part of those things.
So five minutes, love it, and with the last, the the question we asked before, so of everything we just discussed now, are there any, uh, questions you would want to bring to the public?
Well, formalizing this one.
And I say probably get all the answers on next word right now.
Yeah.
Put it together. Ask again. Maybe who's hard looking at next.
I think a lot of it is programming. Having your. Townwide. No. See, you have a lot of. They throw trail things that feel.
Parks market.
So far not. It's a programming thing. Some of it, yes, yes, it'll.
Farmers market, new truck thing, whatever, we actually have the perfect venue for it. Rather than just a holistic village, we have the place to do that.
Yes, uh. A food truck lane, we're gonna build infrastructure, I think you do give it. Or can have that special turn on for all of everyone. I think that that would be. Fantastic, I think that.
Yeah, sure.
Mary Morrison.
Well, what else, what else we need to talk about?
Uh, so. Yeah, any other three questions you want to ask, yes, all the. Over. Okay.
Where where do you get your, I want to know, where do people get? What? Is it really just based? Is there, I love getting my recreation flyer in my mailbox. You six monsters out for the. Is that somewhere that we can get more into creation, cross functional? Program. Program, uh, programs and events. Right, it's not just for the recreation. We expand it a little bit more towards. Ride or not. For what, community organization? With the library.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a good point. The things I see are just snippets. And there's really a lot.
Yeah.
Or or even inherently, I think the town would. Benefit from a yearly investment. Out of our business. Include your things like your. All all that. I don't desperately need it or.
You do have a book like that, right?
I've never received one.
I mean, the discover magazine.
Some bad.
I'm talking specifically about. Sources we're talking about.
Right.
But I put a bus map. A lot of people don't see the bus.
There's no scale.
Yeah. Unfortunately.
And we got to go on to ours, I think it's really good, productive for me, uh, I hope it's productive for you, yeah, I'm sure.
So my issue is Jeff, you and I are talking about.
Yes.
So. I really like to. Hear that. My belief is, uh, we go and come through a session like this, we do the homework, we don't do it prior to. That's my only point, so I have the ability without coming with predetermined set of outcomes, I listen to what you all say. Better understanding of it, as well as I thought appears here, I like the homework posted.
And yeah, you. No, you will get, you'll get your homework sheets.
Update. And you can do.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's okay, we can have.
How does pre?
No, I would like.
I was pre-relate. Just without hearing it for the first time.
Yeah, well, we talked about it, rolled around, taking the oxygen.
And did you fill out your homework, Rick?
I did too.
What did you get on your essay?
Um, this format, I'm gonna be kind of annoying because I don't have. There's something about this format that bothered me because of course I want to support all of this, like Sue said, it's mother got an apple pie, right? And supportive changes, some of this isn't specific enough. Change.
Okay.
Aside from making it more specific.
I don't know, everything we really have to see. But we're all kind of doing our own thing.
I mean, I I'm just, I don't know if this focuses the question. At least before this time, now, maybe now, now the post, I'll be able to go back.
I mean, if if it would be helpful in future homework sheet, we can add a column or if you find this a priority or.
I like the prioritization question, I think that really helps.
Sure.
We have. I do too.
Absolutely.
If you can guide us a little bit there, Jeff.
I I support it. But do I.
Maybe ask with green.
Level of priority.
Right, exactly.
And we would often do that. After we've gotten. Or some, but if you're, if like, if your brain is already going there, then we can add that.
You make it a fillable form, we had that. Oh, it is on the. P D, yeah. That's what I was doing. Yeah, exactly.
It was intended to be fillable, so we will.
Yeah.
And make it. So homework is due tomorrow.
Nah, I'm not saying, how do we?
I knew.
I didn't start it.
Of course, there are no points, there are no grades.
No.
You'll you'll have to be class favorite.
It's still.
I'll have my favorites too.
Very.
We're both happy.
Uh, the next one, this is September twenty ninth, we are going to plan for the Sunday calendar for a three hour. That I think is a big enough topic, we'll probably need that extra hour, don't need the entire three hours, you know, we get two and a half, awesome. Uh, but let's, let's plan on three hours of that.
Okay, perfect, well, thanks a lot, appreciate you all.
Yeah, thanks.
So on that note, three hours, do you want to start early or go later? Well, what?
Does it really mean five to eight?
Four to seven or five to eight?
Four to seven, five to eight, which do you?
Yeah.
No, the twenty nine.
The twenty nine. Number twenty nine, next meeting of this type of meeting.
Yes.
It's regular.
I've already got a planning, planning meeting in here at four thirty at night.
Right. We could, right, we've sent that out.
How do we get between?
That one you got, yeah.
Four thirty, seven thirty.
Okay.
That was whole.
Four thirty seven, being mad.
Very good.
Great.
Good, okay, so is there, are we through, anything else?
Also, again, you can be expecting a lot more material from Mr. Murray soon, uh, really appreciate everything that you guys. Very kind.
Thank you. The point is a more.
You both.
Some of the. Back to family. Thank you very much.
Thank you.